Morning, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to call the order of this public meeting of the Board of Johnson County Commissioners on this twenty-sixth day of October two thousand twenty at ten o'clock AM. Please pray with us. If you would care to, then we'll stand through pledge and allegiance. Ron, you want to lead us?
Go ahead, Brian.
By the way, we do thank you and praise you for this time that you allow us to have. We thank you for the blessings that you've given to this country and us as a whole. I would ask that you just be with us, guide and direct our hearts and our minds as we go through the business of the county today and that we would do all things in honoring you and glorifying you every day of our lives in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
The only state of America, the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Property casualty liability crime and workers' health insurance for no, all those in one law. That's scary. I don't know if anybody have any questions on anything that you want to ask Gary or Jim? I move for approval, sir. And motion second, any further? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That was the easiest year ever, right?
Absolutely.
We're going to make it more difficult than we would like. We're kind of getting used to it, guys, but we appreciate you coming. In case there are any questions, I think Gary and I would like that conversation with you on the phone and on the air. Good job being this year. I know insurance is way up, twelve percent, but that seems to be the standard across the market right now from everything else. You know, our, just in my little business, went up nine percent, something like that, so it's going up everywhere.
Yeah, no doubt, fortunately.
No, there's a lot of stuff going on. They have to make money, that's why they're in business. Anyway, thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Elected officials, animal control.
I need just transparent funds on sight and then just recognition for the, Dr. Jerry, right? I would make a motion to approve one and two.
Second.
There, you want to do them separately?
No, he seconded. Have a motion second, one, one and two. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And grant application, community corrections. This is just a normal grant.
Second.
Have a motion in the second. Any further? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. There's a little delay there, so I'm going to wait on Ron before I...
Yeah.
There's a little...
How about it is?
Planning and... Yeah, just speak up if you're voting against, Ron. Get really loud, okay?
Okay.
Planning and zoning, requesting approval of twenty-twenty day holiday motion.
Good morning, David Hiddle, Johnson County Department of Planning and Zoning, representing the Johnson County Employees Association. We're here to request your approval for the date for the planning and zoning. Christmas lunch will be Wednesday, December twenty-third, with the garment factory, Lord willing.
Have we been able to get with them? Are they available?
Yep, they're locked up.
That's on... I'm sorry.
Wednesday, December twenty-third.
You got start time or we're going to still work on that?
I don't have a specific one. It's typically noon.
Yeah.
Because whereas I know there's been an issue recently, Jason needs to be aware of that, so when we lock up, somebody has their hand up in the audience, remonstrating against you.
No, I'm not remonstrating. Not remonstrating. Betsy Swearingen, Director, Health Department, will you just make sure you submit us a mass gathering plan, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
Soon as I find out what that is.
So it would be noon start. I'm just trying to clarify a bunch of stuff here. Just make sure it's a noon start. We close the building at eleven forty-five?
I'm good for that. Yeah, usually eleven forty-five, ten till.
So just make sure that we know that it's not a very far drive from here, so the buildings will close on December twenty-third at eleven forty-five. So just want to make sure everybody's aware of that.
Yeah, we're just waiting to confirm the date with you before we start getting information out to folks.
I would move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion in the second, December twenty-third at noon. Any further discussion?
Just a clarification. So for the afternoon, typically you give employees... Just can you clarify that a little bit as to how we should handle it administratively?
Yeah, we would still basically give that half the day off. You okay with that, Commissioner West?
Yeah, that's the way we've always done it.
Yeah, just did the way we've always done it the past two years. I think it changed there one time one year, but it's going back to the normal in the last two years.
Okay. If they intend, you have to put that part of your motion, if they intend the lunch break.
If they intend the lunch, then how's that?
They intend, yeah.
Re-motion then. Motion good. Second, you good with that, Ron?
Yes, sir.
And is always, motion second, any further? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Please get with me as you get that together over a second. Highway Department. On a long list.
Look, this is my meeting. There's not much else on...
Every meeting, you're going on time, man, Ron.
Just thought I'd point that out, in case we missed it.
I just want to know, did you talk around the lamp yet?
I haven't actually. I have his...
I did forward and hold the stuff, so I need this number, we'll email if you have it, but we'll get it from there.
Luke Mastin, Highway Director. First item on the agenda is the second reading of the Truck Restriction Ordinance in Park Township. I did as a follow-up to discussion at the last meeting. Got in contact with Shelby County and they are comfortable with us putting a sign up at that last intersection on their County Road four hundred north.
Yeah, ten.
Yeah. I will approve the second reading of this ordinance.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is there any of these we could gather from the audience? Go ahead, sir.
No, I have to talk about all of it.
Reader's Digest, Reader's Digest.
Okay, we'll try the Reader's Digest. Next item is our proposal scoring results and our request for your approval of beginning contract negotiations for the Bridge ninety-eight rehabilitation project. We had three people in our office review the proposals received. Based on our review, we recommend beginning contract negotiations with CHA Consulting for these PE and right-of-way services.
What does CHA stand for?
I'm not sure if it stands for anything, actually.
Okay, well, sometimes there's names behind all of this.
This is, so we've never heard of... So CHA is, is what our, is part of, or used to be RW Armstrong. They changed. It's probably been several years ago. We had done work with RW Armstrong in the past. It's been wild, but CHA, I believe, acquired RW Armstrong.
Second. Your recommendation, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? I guess I would have one question. Are we made in confidence with these people?
Yes.
Going to put ourselves in a bad position.
This is right-of-way services.
PE and right-of-way services.
You're what?
PE and right-of-way services. That's what it's from. Sorry, PE was for.
Oh, PE, yeah.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next item is a request for approval of two small professional services agreements for the acquisition of right-of-way for future northern extension of Mullenix Road. In some conversation we had during I sixty-nine coordination with INDOC, we learned that there is one intended crossing for the majority of the utilities just north of Smith Valley Road interchange. The easement location the utilities were looking to acquire would have actually prevented the county from pursuing extending that road north. So we coordinated with the utilities and with INDOC to identify enough right-of-way that would allow us to extend that road north sometime in the future. It's not something that's planned for right now, while still allowing the utilities to acquire the easement that they need for their relocations for INDOC.
Luke, is that, is that consideration to eventually do that frontage road on up through the subdivision?
Yes, exactly where we would make that crossing, we don't know yet. The, but this would essentially allow us to make that extension in the future by acquiring it right now, rather than letting the utilities go in and do an easement and then be forced to pay them to move down the road.
Is that from Southland Church, the acquisition?
This is actually from the Speedway parcel.
Oh, okay.
Pretty sizable piece of ground to the north.
It is, that majority of this parcel is either, is within the flood plain.
Opposed in that?
Yeah.
Waterway.
The, yes, so, yeah, majority of the potential acquisition, almost all of it is in the flood plain. There's quite a bit of it that's in the floodway as you go further north on the property, which would not be developable at all for the property owner, but would allow us to build a bridge there when we determine how we're going to cross the creek. That would be something that would be allowed. So it's a large-sized parcel, but I'm not expecting significant dollar amounts just due to the fact that the bulk of it is not developable to, to private.
From my recollection, it's a pretty rough area.
Yeah.
Overgrown and trees and flooding, so I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Opinion, anyway, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Motion pending legal seconds, pending legal, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Next item is approval execution of our twenty-twenty pavement rejuvenation contract with Reju Tech. This contract is being awarded as Reju Tech is the sole source supplier for the products used. We're allowed to award that under the NCO five twenty-two ten thirteen. The amount of the contract is one hundred and forty-eight thousand, sixty-six dollars and then twenty-seven cents.
Is this pretty much upon what it has been last year?
Yes, we changed the years on the contract. Everything else is as we've done before.
I would move for approval, then.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next item is a request for the bid submitted deadline for our twenty-twenty-one material bids. This would be for aggregate concrete, crushed gravel, FOP hot mix, unleaded and diesel fuel, and liquid asphalt materials. Requesting that date, December seventh, at your three PM meeting.
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Last item is the ratification of letters, financial commitment letters that were submitted with our twenty-twenty community crossings applications. These were due last Friday, so the letters needed to be signed before today's meeting, but these applications were the ones that were identified when we submitted the twenty-twenty road maintenance plan. If selected, reconstruction for these projects would be done in twenty-twenty-one.
I'm going to move for approval for the ratification of financial commitment letter.
Second.
You're hearing awful well, Commissioner. What's going on?
I'm easy. I'm down here, sunshine.
Mulder's down the street here. Man, normally he's not, um, he's not that quick to respond. Have a motion in a second. Any further? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. I like your shirt, by the way, Commissioner.
Well, thank you. Yeah, it's been, been a busy time here in Southwest Florida. Played pickleball this morning. Probably go play a little poker this afternoon. It's, it's rough.
It's... Some of us wish we had that life, sir. Board of Commissioners, discussion of RDC appointment, and this is actually my discussion and, and I haven't made a, I haven't made a final determination on, on my position at the RDC, but I'm praying about it. But I wanted to kind of bring up to the Commissioners and keep everybody informed. I, I really feel like my spot on the RDC is just kind of not, I'm not the best person to be in that position. Number one, due to time, because of all the other obligations I have with what I do as a county, but then also just in, in the realm of what it takes to understand that process. And I think there's a person that could replace me on that board that would be a much better person for that position. Kevin McGinnis is who I'm considering. But I want to kind of just put that out there to the other two Commissioners, because I know we're all three on that board, and to possibly get your permission to move forward in some discussions with Mr. McGinnis and possibly moving forward to, to that end, once I come to a conclusion. So just kind of want to get a consensus from you guys. I want you to think about that.
Like I tell you, from my end, that the, the things that we have to go through the RDC in order to affect the TIF districts is much, much more complicated than I ever imagined or envisioned. So I can see going down the road, it is, is going to take a considerable amount of time. I respect your, your thoughts on that. I think you would serve well on that commission, on that committee. But by the same token, I know Kevin, with his building experience and his management experience, man, the town manager at Bargersville would be a good person also, so. But it's going to take some time. That's apparent.
And, and I also need to make sure that Kevin McGinnis understands that time that would be on there before I would bring that forward anyway, but I just wanted to get it out there. I wanted to know my thoughts, because I know I zoomed in for the last meeting. I'll probably zoom in for the meeting tomorrow just because of other things I've got to be doing at the time, but I just kind of want to get that out there. And I know you guys are busy too, but it's, it's just, it's going to be a real weight on me continuing forward with that.
I mean, the only thing else, I, I mean, I respect McGinnis full-heartedly. He does sit on another board within the county, on the hospital board. I've always been a strong advocate to move some of these positions around to other people, because it's a large county. I would like to see an application process, but I mean, it's your guys' decision. If that's the way you want to move forward, there's nothing I can do about it, but I would, I would like to see that opened up a little bit. But I mean, he would serve good. I have no problem with that, but he does serve on the board right now, and I've been a very strong advocate since I've been on here to open these positions up to other people across the county, and I think we've done a really, really good job of doing that, so that's my...
And I have no problem with that. It's just, that's one gentleman that...
I mean, he's good. I mean, I, he's good. There's, there's a lot of other people out there that are going to, that we found out moving forward from last...
Kevin is on the hospital board. He's also on the library board now, so he does have some commitments.
Got a couple other boards.
As I said, I really need to have a long conversation with him anyway, but I have no problem at all with the process, an application process. But let me, if, if you could be patient, just let me come to it.
Oh, you're fine. No, I know. It's a big commitment. I know.
Yeah, and I just need to make sure that I'm prepared for that time. I just wanted to get that out there, just so everybody's aware. I don't, anybody think I'm not doing my job, because I'm trying. Justice Center addition and renovation change order.
Wes, you want to talk about this? I'll let Wes talk about this firsthand.
Good morning. The, this change order is...
Wes, can you introduce yourself?
Wes Harrison, I'm that latest representative for the county for the Justice Center expansion.
Thank you, sir.
And this change order is a result of some fine-tuning of the design of the book-in area. And over a year ago, we met with the architects and discussed the design for the book-in area at the new Justice Center. And at the time, not all representatives were available that were going to be operating that area. And since that time, we've revisited the space and made some adjustments to make it much more efficient on both the personnel that's able to be used there and the movement within the space as well. What that resulted in was some electronic and security adjustments and then some casework adjustments too, which is basically the cabinetry, the, the, the space where the inmates would come in, and it was kind of set up like a bank teller before, and now it's more broad-based to where it can be used for, to accept a lot more prisoners on large booking days. So the result of that was some cost additions and the, the result is about a forty-two thousand dollar change order. That money was already accounted for in the project as part of the contingency, and we're just asking that that contingency be used to pay for this change order. It might be forty-six thousand.
Forty-six.
Forty-six.
Almost forty-seven.
Yeah, so that's the history behind it. The result is, is that we had discussions with the user group, and everybody that was going to be a part of that user group made adjustments to make this space more efficient, again, with the money as part of the contingency, and we'd like to draw from that contingency for this change order.
Got any questions, Ron?
I never did hear the amount of the change order.
Forty-six thousand, nine hundred and eight dollars.
Okay. No, I don't have any questions. I have, I don't know a whole lot about that project, so I'm not in-qualified to ask a question, I don't think.
You got a question? I'm probably not either, but I've got some, I knew to have some questions and comments. Does part of this include security cameras?
Yes.
Is that understanding, you have to go back into the medical area?
Not for this particular part. The majority of this was for the book, new book-in area, the renovation of the book-in area.
Which is the existing book-in area or the new?
It's existing and then that's being renovated to be part of the new as well.
I guess my question to Sheriff is, Sheriff, I met with you the other day on some basically COVID prevention things we were doing. Is that part of this too, or is that separate from this? I guess my, my question on it is, in number one, not really being approached with this, made aware of it prior to coming to here, and knowing and understanding the prints and, and me taking and calling myself people, looked at the plans, the original plans and the addition that we're adding to this. And I understand it's a contingency fund, but it's still extra money.
Sure.
That, that, you know, you don't plan on spending unless you just have to. I just, in, in the realm of things, and I'll be honest with you, with the high-dollar engineers that we hired on this project, the architectural, supposedly hiring the best company, you know, in, in the jail industry to build this, I'm a little disturbed, I guess, that this, I know we say we can make it more efficient if there weren't people there, but we're talking experienced people that have done this a lot of times.
Right.
How do we come up with forty-seven thousand dollars of extras that I feel shouldn't have been there to start with?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm just really disappointed in, in that whole, that whole area. I just, that, and I, I know we've got more coming, more extras on things that we've had to add. That's coming that we're going to add to this. It's still not going to the contingency funds, but I guess my point is, I just feel like somebody failed to do the job properly at that point in time.
I, just from my perspective, from representing the owner, I can't disagree with you. There, there have been a few things and that we've been surprised, disappointed, didn't meet our expectations, because you're right, we hired jail experts, and that's what we would expect. So, yeah, can't, can't deny that.
Just for, for it to be on public record, shame on them, you know, and make sure they understand that, and I think somebody needs to have a really...
Well, come.
With these people.
Yeah.
Because I, I am really, really disappointed in this. This is a big, big money, dollar thing for the taxpayers. It's going to be more money than, than probably what we expected and they expected, and I just, it's really disappointing that I thought we were hiring the right people for that. And I appreciate you coming and carefully leaning it to us, you know. With that said, I'm not, not standing in the way of a motion or anything to do it. I'm not. I mean, that's not my point. I just want to get my...
I know Sheriff's been involved in this, and I know it's not a good taste in your mouth, and this will be addressed, but for this project to move forward right now, I'm going to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion in the second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And that wasn't pointed at, shouldn't be the other hand. I hope you understand. I know you're our representative.
We're clearly aware of this.
None of business claims and credit card. Ron?
I, I got to apologize. I don't have anything.
Well, that's not an apology. There's some people probably grateful for that. Right, Sheriff?
Amen.
I had a couple of questions, but I...
I had one too, and I was going to send it to Ron, and I didn't. Oh, jackets, jackets. Superior Court three jackets. Did anybody catch that? Let me... Four hundred and some dollars for jackets, and I know that was done here just not a year or two years ago. There were jackets bought over there. We questioned it then, and I'm still questioning it now, why we need to purchase jackets in the inside court area. You know, temperature is, I guess temperature is essential to those at different levels for everybody. If you're too cold or too hot, you know, take care of that problem. Wear a short sleeve shirt or bring a jacket. But I don't know why we would be paying for jackets at the court. Just, had to get that out there. Go ahead, sir.
There was some wheel tax that looks like it was doubled up. I don't know if it's making up for two separate base cycles or if they're almost identical. They are identical.
So we charge twice?
We paid twice.
Paid twice.
Yeah, the outlet cash going to Greenwood, White Lundy. So I don't know. That was just my, my question. Was it look like it's doubled up? Just look at that. It just, it looks like it's doubled. I've never seen it doubled up like that, so.
Maybe get that to them.
That's all I had.
Hey, the reason I had, Brian, the reason I had to apologize was I didn't bring my iPad, so I didn't have access to the claims or the, to the credit cards. But to your point on clothing, I don't think anybody's been more of an outspoken critic of what these different departments spend on clothing. I'm telling you, everything that you can imagine, right down to twenty-dollar personalized face mask. And again, a lot of times, it's, it's not a huge amount, but when you look at the fairness or parity of it, it'll, you know, every office that we have could come in and, or every department say, I want to get, get sweaters and hats and jackets and all of that, say, right down to socks, I guess, for my, my people. I just can't see, unless your job demands it... I guess, for my, my people. I just can't see, unless your job demands it by virtue of the wear and tear on your clothing, like maintenance people and people like that. I just, I really struggle with these departments. You gotta have sweaters because air conditioning's too cold or whatever the hell. I'm going to go into this, the, the different departments, but you've heard me complain about it before.
And, and I don't disagree with you, Commissioner. And that's why I brought it up is, is I think this needs to be out, at least, we're, at least we're publicly saying that I'm not in agreement with this, because there, there are areas, our sheriff's office, definitely, you know, those are uniforms that are required to be worn, and, and, and those are expensive items that need to be provided. Maintenance, I agree, and, and maybe even some other areas. But it just seems like, you know, we get into logo masks and we get into jackets for people that are working indoors. Gosh, I don't supply that to my staff, my guys that work outdoors in the winter. I don't supply those kind of things. So I just don't get where the taxpayers should be responsible for that. So it's out there. I know if we don't approve the claim, it's going to end up kicking us in the butt because of the way it's always been done. But I just, I needed to put it out there that I really disagree with some of the stuff that's going on.
Well, I pointed out, and this is the council's fault, I feel like, they didn't pick up on it. I even mentioned it to a couple of them. But nine-one-one, you know, had forty-six-hundred dollars in their budget for next year for wearing apparel. Man, you'd have a devil of a time convincing me they need forty-six-hundred dollars worth of clothing out there to, to do what they do. But nevertheless.
I disagree with that, sir.
Somebody needs to get ahold of Judge Hamner and ask him how, how he's going to support that, I guess.
I, I think that was done last time, from what I remember. So I don't, I don't know. I just, it sounded familiar to me. It's happened before, and I don't know what. Sorry. Two meetings and a wrong number for approval on one. It's a shock. It is a shock. You didn't hear me.
I heard you.
You're still thinking about it.
I'm still thinking about it.
You want, if we don't, you know how it works if we don't approve them, Ron? Who, who gets hit for that, right?
I didn't catch that.
Said you still know, you still realize who gets the ding on this if we don't approve it. The Commissioners get the ding on it because everything's under our name.
Yeah.
We still haven't got that changed, you know?
Yeah.
I mean, a motion, a second.
I second it.
Yeah. A motion second. Any further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Commissioner minutes from ten twelve two thousand twenty.
Who to approve?
Second. Have a motion second. Any further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any?
One thing I'd like to circle back.
Because when we get there, Commissioner.
One thing I'd like to circle back with. Michael's here now, like maybe here is public recognition, recognition on the eleventh annual Going to the Dog's charity ride.
Appreciate you showing up on time next time. I'm kidding you. You know me.
I'm sorry, Commissioner. I thought it was three o'clock today, since there was a council meeting tonight.
Is there a council meeting tonight?
Yes.
Oh, I didn't know that. You're one ahead of me. I was going to be late for council.
Oh, I was thinking. I apologize. Yes, we, this year they have the eleventh annual Sarah Woods Ride, Charity Ride. And they've raised over a hundred thousand dollars for us the past eleven years. And with the generous donation of anonymous donor who gave us a nice donation earlier, we've been able to do some things at the shelter that we could only have dreamed of doing. And with this additional money coming in that they raised on the charity ride September twenty-six, that will bring the total up to close to right around nine thousand dollars that we raised this year. And just wanted to publicly recognize that it'll work. They, they start planning this ride way back usually in April or May, and it takes place in September. A lot, a lot of work. And so we really appreciate their hard work and appreciate all that certain people have done for the, for the animal shelter. Unbelievable.
Love animals.
They, we have a, in fact, the Sarah Woods Committee toured the shelter just before my vacation a couple of weeks ago. And they were quite frankly blown away by just all my stuff faces. So we're really excited about it.
Any questions?
No, I just wanted to get the public recognition that they deserve.
Thank you very much. And over here tonight, the county council meeting as well, the presentation.
He's very good considering that, so.
Thanks for calling me back. Paul, mind what you have up there?
Any, while, while you're here, I know you and I've had some discussion that probably gentlemen are familiar with, Michael, maybe an in-house clinic of some kind of animal.
Yes.
You want to kind of just say what you've kind of been doing on that? And, and for those who don't know, what Michael and I have been talking about, a way to save the taxpayer quite a bit of money probably by doing some things we can do inside the animal shelter. But if you want to maybe talk about that for just a second.
Thank you, Commissioner. One of the biggest expenses that we have, and thus taxpayers in Johnson County has, is spay neutering animals that come into strays. When we return an animal to an owner and it's to be spayed or neutered, the owner pays for that spay neuter. That greatly reduces costs, of course, and a really good deal for anyone who wants to get their animal spayed or neutered. However, at least fifty percent to sixty percent of the animals that come in are not owned, or at least no owner claims them, which means for us to get them into a rescue or us to, to send them to a rescue, which the majority of the animals go. We put the cost for these spay neuter, rabies vaccination, things like that. And we have a low-cost spay neuter facility, either in the shelter or somewhere close by, where the vets here in Johnson County, we've spoken with before in the past, would be willing to donate their time on a rotating basis. That could potentially save the taxpayers thousands of dollars a year, not just in spay neuter costs, but the cost of transporting the animals, say, to this nearby low-cost spay neuter facility. We're looking at maybe doing something like that in the shelter itself. We have some room that we could utilize and to build a, a facility or a, an area in which spay neuter, spay neuters could be performed in the shelter. I'm meeting this Wednesday with one of our local vets to try to kind of hopefully get some information and equipment that would be needed, best place to purchase things like that, cost savings analysis, things of that nature. We're also meeting with Bay Clinic in Indianapolis, of course, their low-cost spay neuter facility, get some of their advice and some of their direction. Hopefully, maybe that's something we can look at very seriously in twenty-twenty-one. And that way, the, not only will it benefit the taxpayers, but also get the vets here in Johnson County, which we have the best vets anywhere here in Johnson County, to donate their time on a rotating basis.
That's good to know. Again, I, I love foresight of animal control and, and on record, I'll stand out there as well as the sheriff's office, of course, with the sheriff. And if I notice my, my pros for both of those. But I, I just think that's a fantastic idea going forward. I'd be more than happy to help with that, as I have to pass with the furball. But we need to make that happen, and I want to make that sure that people are aware of that, that that's being worked on by Michael.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. And thank you for all your help. I, I know a lot of things that other people don't know. And just because of discretion, just how much you've done for the shelter, I will publicly.
Want to see those babies happy.
Yeah, I know. And thank you, Brian.
Appreciate all you guys do out there. Really do.
Thank you so much.
Anyway, I just think that's a fantastic idea. And I'm just, I'm just amazed. This is the foresight that we have in Johnson County with the people we have, the sheriff's office, nine-one-one center, animal control, just all those different areas, that foresight that we have that, that just hit, we're heads above anybody in the state in, in all those areas. So just fantastic job, guys. Keep it up. Hope things go well. One thing about Sheriff, I, I know this isn't probably the right time, but I started in no shape November early. And I know I'm still a badge deputy, so there's my money for that. And also with the fun that I put on myself for starting early. So just, you know, I'm doing my part. Any other public comment?
Betsy?
Sure.
I want to hear how the site's going. I have a fair ground busy. You want to run out of your shoes or you're out of?
My foot's asleep. Betsy Swearingen, Director, Health Department. I think we, the testing sites going well. We're, we've tested over two thousand people. That's probably a week-old stat, so we're probably more in the, probably twenty-five hundred, I would think. We're averaging about a hundred a day. We've had a couple of days where we've done a hundred and fifty. So it's working well. Thanks to the Fairgrounds, Marty, Brian. They have been amazing. Anytime we need anything, anytime I need to plug something in, anytime I need anything, they're great. And they're, they're always there for us. So that's fantastic. We appreciate that. We may be introducing a couple of different type of testing platforms, but we're investigating the, the benefit of that right now. So I'll keep you posted on that. I think that's it. Just another reminder, wear your masks. We lost four yesterday at the Health Department who are now in quarantine for fourteen days for not wearing them in the car when they rode around together. So I think almost a lot of departments are, are getting hit. So I know it's a pain, but try to wear them if you can. That's my only preaching. I'll do.
Thank you, Betsy.
Hey, what, I was going to ask Betsy what her positivity rate is on the testing they're doing.
It's. It's staying right in line, Ron, with what, what, you know, the nation's statistics say. We're just doing so many more tests, so the positives are, are really, I think the more testing we do, the more positives we're going to see. It's just how it works. And people are, literally, if they are around the person when they're shedding the virus, they're testing positive five or six days later.
So out of the two thousand you've tested, how many of them were positive?
I knew you were going to answer that. I don't know. I don't know that. I don't know. Okay.
I'm just curious.
I can find that if you want me to and get it to you.
You could email it to me and then check and see if you've tested my son, because when I sent him down there to get tested, he was, he, he was. Something, I think he wound up being a sinus infection. I want to make sure he showed up.
As long as.
I, I would if I could, okay? I'll have your son call you. How's that sound?
Yeah. Thank you.
Anything else? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm already adjourned.
That's, that's a second. Have a motion. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.